Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of our righteous hands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Now we do, Ron, you wanted to do that.
Mayor, I think you're okay saying there.
Okay. Thank you.
Just do this and make everybody concede.
Do you want to approve the agenda first? Do you want to approve agenda, agenda first or no?
We want to do this first. We're out of sequence, but we really should get the quorum sworn in before we take an action, I think would be better. All right, so I'm going to administer the oath of office to our mayor. And if you would like to raise your right hand, you're going to repeat after me. I state your name.
Angelica Serra.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances for the city of Amesville.
And charter and ordinance and for the city of Amesville.
And that I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of mayor.
Discharge the duties of mayor.
In the city of Amesville.
In the city of Amesville.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
The best of my abilities.
All right, congratulations. Have you signed yours?
At my desk.
Try to break it up, please.
Thank you.
The first time that was on the top of the page.
Yeah, you have to.
It's a time twister.
Can you sign both of them?
This one is for you, so you don't need to sign it for that one. This one is going with the official one.
Are we doing everyone first and then?
Yes.
Okay. So the next person is Scott Lee. Thank you. Will you raise your right hand? Say, uh, repeat after me. I, Scott Lee.
Hi, Scott Lee.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the constitutions and the laws of the United States of America. And the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
State.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Amesville. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of city councillor in the city of Amesville. According to the law and the best of my ability. So next we have Katie Wallace. Stand. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Katie Wallace.
I, Katie Wallace.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
Laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinance, ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Amesville.
Of the city of Amesville.
And that I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Charge the duties.
Of city councillor.
City councillor.
In the, in and for.
And for.
The city of Amesville.
City of Amesville.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my abilities.
Best of my ability.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Walter Witt. Go ahead and raise your right hand. I, Walter Witt.
I, Walter Witt.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Amesville.
Of the city of Amesville.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
In the city of Amesville.
City of Amesville.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Oh shit. I signed on the wrong line.
Did we get that on the record?
Okay. Make sure that gets in the minutes.
Yeah, I'll be sure to note that.
Have a bleep machine on.
Got it over there. She's ready all the time.
Thanks. All right, let's get going here. Uh, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agendas presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Um, presentations, proclamations and visitors, we have already done the oath of offices. Um, now we discuss the appointment of council president. Um, is there any volunteers?
Yes, I volunteer.
Anyone else or?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I just, I mean, in addition to me saying I'm, I'm, well, I just think it would be a good idea to just kind of rotate that experience so that other people get an opportunity and get the experience to kind of ready to step forward or fill in.
Just need to make sure you're able to attend all the meetings like at the legislature and stuff with Angie too, because that's a lot of what they do.
Yeah. When was the last time it changed hands?
Oh, when I was mayor, when I, my last term.
And before that?
Uh, before that, I, I was council president and before myself was De La Cine. Um, wanted to do it, you said. There ends what you guys want.
Well, typically, typically how we would do, uh, is maybe, it sounds like there's some interest, so what you could do is open it up for nominations, people can self nominate themselves. Um, and so then you would, you would just then conduct a vote. How many for one, how many for the other?
All right, so we can open it up. I mean, we had volunteers, I take volunteers as nominations, but if we want to make it formal. If you want to nominate somebody or yourself, please go ahead and do it for the record.
A nomination or vote?
Uh, for the record, can we have a formal nomination? Yeah. So if you're nominating yourself, you would say, I nominate yourself, or if you want to nominate somebody else, you would say their name.
I'll nominate myself.
Anybody else?
I don't like to do it myself.
I was going to nominate Doug. Uh, previous, previous meetings I saw back from the previous mayor had kind of made the suggestion every year to rotate. Um, so obviously it did.
It's a two-year appointment.
If that's what it is, okay.
Runs the same as the mayor's.
Okay. Um, so there's no other nominations. Um, I do rely on the council president law to attend, uh, meetings, um, and sign texts and, uh, go with me to lobby. So, um, that is an expectation. Um, if there, and then I just appoint, right, Ron? There's no?
The purpose of the council president, is that what you asked?
No, do I just appoint it now?
Oh, well, what we would do is if there, we would ask if there's no other nominations, we'll close the nominations and we'll close the nominations and we'll vote on whoever the nominees are.
Okay, so if there are no other nominations, we will close nominations and then we vote. All those in favor of, uh, Douglas Cox for council president, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Doug, you are president. Um, I am going to, um, lobby days on the 28th. It's a whole day, 29th, no, no, it's 28th. So.
Yeah, we can just get together and look at your calendar and, yeah.
Okay.
Or if I could fill in.
Um, are there any members of audience, in the audience or via Zoom that have any public comments according to our presentations?
No Zoom attendees.
Okay. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I moved to, oh.
Go ahead.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to number four, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Moving on to number five, old business, there is no old business. Uh, number six, new business, six A, updates to the development code, we will invite our planner um, to come and perform the presentation. That Liam?
Liam.
Liam.
It's just more of a discussion.
Okay.
This is going to be an informal discussion today. Um, I know that some of you all were able to attend when we had a more formal presentation about these updates with the planning commission. It's kind of a full work session, it was a big joint work session. Um, and I know not everybody was able to make it. If anybody has any questions about that work session, if anybody has any questions, like I say something off the cuff today, you know, wait a second, I need that taken back, you can ask today. Um, or you can shoot me an email and I'm happy to, to respond. Um, so updates to the development code are coming. Amesville's been pretty nimble in the past, you guys are really impressive in how quickly you're able to update the development code and be responsive, so that's a really cool feature and I'm really excited to work with you all because of that. I also feel like, um, I keep reintroducing myself because I've been the planner for a couple of months now, but I still haven't met everyone. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Liam Bean, I'm the contract land use planner from the Council of Governments. So, most of the amendments that we're going to be making to the code are based on responses to state mandates. So there are two big dates in 2025 in which new legislation from the last session is going to take effect that are impactful to the development code and that first date is, uh, January 1st, 2025, so there have been some changes. Uh, the good news is all of the changes that came at January 1st, 2025, we don't plan to amend and change in the development code yet. There's been some change to procedure, um, at state mandates that preempt the development code. Um, and then there have been some temporary measures put in place and because both of these things preempt the code, the state has said, hey, you don't need to amend your code. It's in, it's in the House and Senate bills that these are in, there's no need for an amendment, it just is, so that's just something that as the land use planner, I just kind of need to keep in track. Um, but generally, these are pretty minor things and if they stick around, they might not, some of these provisions expire in eight years, right? Um, really seven, uh, if they stick around, they may be worth adding to the development code and if they really are temporary provisions, um, to stimulate the development of new housing, then there's no use amending our code for things that are going to be gone. The things we will be amending our code for are more dealing with, uh, House Bill 3395 and House, a little bit of, I believe, House Bill 4046. Uh, these are things that don't have an expiration date and are more permanent. We've discussed these during the work session, the big one is duplexes are going to be permitted in every zone. That's just going to be a by right use in every zone and they're going to be permitted at the same density as single family. That's kind of the big one that's coming down the pipeline, there are some other small stuff. Mostly it's going to be amendments to definitions, um, cleaning up definitions for manufactured dwellings and then making sure that the code reflects, uh, a clear and even standard between manufactured dwellings and single family dwellings, no, I'm sorry, clear and objective standard, they have to be the same. So most of these are code cleanup and the good news about the Amesville Development Ordinance is the way it's written, this code cleanup is going to be pretty minimal. But I'm going to be sticking my fingers back into both of the sections of the residential zoning ordinance, so both the low density and the higher density residential zones. While we're in there, it may behoove us to clean up some other definitions, um, make some things a little clearer and make sure that as we move forward with these amendments, we're capturing the council's intent. So if you have questions about what the, what, um, state mandates are coming, I'm happy to answer them. But I think more today is information gathering, there's a couple of little tricksy things, um, where sometimes it says one thing, sometimes it says something that's very similar but not quite the same. And mostly where this comes up is actually going to be oh yeah, my, my copy of the Amesville Development Ordinance is tabbed. But I didn't label my tabs, sorry. Uh, but, 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 no. Well, I'm going to need, I'm going to need an update because this one is actually missing the last amendment. So I'm one amendment behind on my physical code. Um, in case I say anything just quite wrong, so, uh, for example, there's a general requirement in, uh, section six, specifically in section 6.10, uh, that every dwelling unit in the high density residential zone be 1,000 square feet. That 1,000 square feet isn't defined as 1,000 square feet in floor area or 1,000 square feet of enclosed space. For manufactured homes, it says it'll be enclosed space, but for, for example, a single family dwelling, it, it could be unclear what that 1,000 square feet means. Right? If it's floor area, um, how do we define floor area? Is that the building code floor area? So we're, uh, that's one of these issues where we do want to kind of gather some, some information, um, there is this line through the code. Um, it, it shows up in three different places, it shows up in the debt, uh, the permitted uses, the conditionally permitted uses, attached single family dwellings and there it says 1,000 square feet enclosed. We don't have a strong definition of enclosed. Um, it shows up specifically for manufactured homes where it says 1,000 square feet. We can keep that line of code, but we probably should get rid of it because it if it points to a single family dwelling, it now points to a manufactured home as well, so now that's kind of duplication in the code, which just becomes messy and leads to difficult interpretations. And then there is a general standard which is the least specific and that general standard is standard 6.10B, dwelling units except for ADU shall be not less than 1,000 square feet. So I wasn't here when that was adopted, I believe the legislative intent was knowing that those changes to manufactured homes were coming and that the standard had to be even for all dwelling types. It's actually not true, it only has to be the same for manufactured homes, duplexes and single family. Any standard that applies to all three of those has to apply to the other two. But other dwelling types can still be regulated differently. Um, for example, multifamily can be regulated differently. So I guess kind of the feedback before I get in here and start adding definitions of floor area and determining if this is enclosed floor area versus or which is a gross floor area or net floor area or habitable floor area, which are all things we could steal from the building code. Um, just sort of what is the legislative intent of that? Um, do we want to make sure that all dwelling units are 1,000 square feet? Is that supposed to be keeping the single family manufactured home duplexes dwelling units at minimum 1,000 square feet? Is that 1,000 square feet but not including exterior area? Sort of that kind of feedback.
Was the idea maybe to like draw a difference between the tiny homes and, uh?
Yeah.
Full-size manufactured home or whatever.
Back when a lot of the first rules surrounding manufactured homes were being written, there was a specific kind of model ordinance from, uh, the League of Oregon Cities which matched with the state requirement. Um, the 1,000 thing, uh, the 1,000 square foot enclosed space was a thing you were allowed to request specifically of manufactured homes in the past as a minimum. Most single wides already, modern single wides are going to be larger than that requirement. Um, because it also helps them meet some other requirements on the pre-engineered design side of the manufactured homes. Uh, now you can still have that requirement like our code does, but you have to make sure that it also points to duplexes and single family dwellings at a minimum. So if you set a minimum size for manufactured homes, it has to be the same minimum size for duplexes and single family. The way that the code is written today, that means if somebody wanted to build a 960 square foot single family dwelling, like a bungalow style, they would not be permitted to.
I can, I can just chime in because not all the council were here to have a historical, most of you were, but um, I, I think at the time we were going through that, our visioning process and one, one of the concerns was tiny homes. And that wasn't something that we wanted. We didn't have necessarily a formula, but, um, Liam is correct, that one of the things that we did when we developed the the one, we just took the 1,000 square feet because at the time, I think that was the number we had for manufactured homes and we just said, let's apply this across the board, so we're treating all units fairly, I think the question is um, that Liam is getting at is, is that the standard that you see today? And do you see that standard across all types of housing types? The answers to those questions will help us form how we should uh, approach a code amendment, so as an example, is 1,000 square foot minimum reasonable for an apartment complex? Um, and if that, if that is what you feel is a reasonable minimum standard and that is your intent, we'll just clean the code up to say that. Um, but we just needed some feedback to make sure. I mean, to me, I think I recall the intent and the intent was this was a minimum enclosed space. We want to test that with you, we want to make sure you still think it's reasonable for those different types and if not, let us know and we'll just clean that up a little bit.
I thought apartment complexes fell under multifamily, which you said was separate.
So this is all in the multifamily zone, these rules don't necess, that, that's sort of what makes it a little more complicated. Um, is because of the way the code is worded, um, we can make it separate. We can choose to make it separate, we can say, single family has to be 1,000 different standard for multifamily, that's.
I'd say most multifamily do not meet 1,000 square feet in any industry I've seen.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Each apartment would have to be 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
At least now.
And most of them are between 800 and 950.
Is that a thousand per side?
It would be, uh, under this, it would be 1,000 per side and there is no, there is no clear pointer to what that square feet is.
They'd be square footage?
Yeah, yeah, like we, we could add something to say, um, that this is the gross or net or habitable, right? Um, all of those are definitions that can be borrowed from the building code or we can write our own definition around enclosure. But that's another one of the conversations is, I think that's correct, um, a studio is usually between 400 and 600.
I, I would not want to include multifamily in 1,000 square feet because that would greatly limit what could be built and most people can't afford that big of an apartment as a single person anymore at the rate of rent.
And people probably wouldn't want to build that big of apartments either, right? Just to be in Amesville?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is the land that's available, it would, it would greatly cut down the number of units that we could allow built.
An apartment's that big, I don't think, like, by the time they get the costing, it would not be considered affordable housing.
I mean, if you have a three-bedroom, obviously you're going to be 1,000 square feet or more, but for the smaller units that we mostly get here, I don't think that would be a good thing for us to do.
We just need to define like what's livable or habitable.
That would be, uh, I mean, I think the minimum, uh, that we're going to need to do as part of this amendment is add some kind of definition on the end of that square feet, like if I have to have a conversation with somebody, then the conversation is, okay, the minimum is 1,000 square feet and it's 1,000 square feet of what? Um, if we could add something that says 1,000 square feet of gross habitable area, that makes it clear and easy to implement. And then we can add a definition of what is gross habitable.
I was going to add next, yeah.
Yeah, I have to add like.
The garage that I duplex, but, um, yeah, those are questions that.
So it would be, and because it's set to unit right now, that would be per unit, so for a duplex, it would be each side. Um, and like I said, if we, if you want a definition that applies to single family, it has to apply to duplexes and it has to apply to manufactured homes. But you could draw a line where a duplex works this way, a triplex works this way, a fourplex works this way, because currently, I mean, I don't know if we want to get that detailed.
I, 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 I think, uh, I do see the point that you're saying there, although the last apartments we approved, I think were, uh, 13 to 1800 square feet. Um, and I think that's what we were using as a basis for the guide, I know that, um, we built them in the city around 700 or 800 square feet. Um, but I think we were trying to make a distinction between, um, tiny dwellings, right? Because you can just stack those and call it multifamily. So we're trying to draw that line, my preference would be, um, our approach. I, I would be concerned about manipulating the code if we tried to leave it at a thousand square feet, my personal opinion, and maybe Liam has another opinion about this. I would be concerned if we tried to define it as livable space because somebody could build a 300 square foot unit and then you have 800 square foot of courtyard and call it all livable space. And then we have no control, I'd I, I would think that we, if we can regulate apartments separate, multifamily separate, which it sounds like we can.
I think it would be helpful for us to understand, like, those are a lot of legalese that, so what is livable space, what is habitable space, what I?
That, that's, that's why.
What I think of livable space is not the garage in the courtyard, right? But.
Yeah. So the garage, the garage, residential garage would not be considered gross habitable floor area.
Yeah.
But a private outdoor area that is enclosed on three sides and enclosed from above would be considered gross habitable floor area.
Well, in that case, I mean, that kind of a definition would be fine to me. But I'm just wondering if we, I mean, would you prefer that we define it like that?
We, I think that the, the smart, like, it seems to me that the way the code is written today, it's going after four walls and a roof.
That's what I want to know.
Yeah.
What's inside and consider.
Is there a way to tie it, like, when you buy a building permit, it's 1,500 square foot home and a 400 square foot garage? That's how they calculate it.
Yes.
Is there some way to word it something like that?
Absolutely, like, we can absolutely do that, that's why whenever I talk about, um, square footage definitions, I always go, let's, how can we borrow from the building code? Let's make it as easy as possible and use the same language as the building code. And the other thing is that builders are used to that language, so when they see that language, they know what it means and we don't have to worry too much. Um, i- if we were to say, use that language, then in fully enclosed floor area would be four walls and a roof. Gross habitable floor area is, certain things are excluded. Gross habitable floor area is certain things are excluded. For example, you don't count a flu or chimney as gross habitable floor area. There's specific things excluded from it. Then there's gross and net floor area. Uh, so net floor area is usually what's going to be used in a calculation. Um, we could define based off of net floor area, which for example, might exclude depending on the use. Um, a hallway, uh, so you can get really nitty gritty with it. I think what's more important is to make the distinction at the high level between, is this talking about fully enclosed space? Or livable space, period. And I think if the intent was, hey, one thousand square foot of fully enclosed space excluding a garage, then we can write one thousand square feet of enclosed space excluding a garage. And write that language, make it very clear, um, and make sure that the, the legislative intent is in the code so that we don't have to have a conversation across from somebody be like, well, you didn't define what square feet means in this exact context.
That, that has happened. That ha- that, that has.
Would we have to exclude like porches, decks?
You
Ridges or?
It, it, it could be, um, but generally if you say something is fully enclosed, you would exclude porches and decks. And then we would define, hey, a fully enclosed space is enclosed by four, um, four walls that don't necessarily have to be load bearing and a roof.
Actual living space.
However, if council thought for multifamily, a thousand square foot threshold is too high, then we could, we could define it so it's definitive, but we could set that number a little lower. I I would be concerned about some of the lower numbers you talked about, just because of the type of development we're trying to encourage here. That will probably isn't.
I've seen a nine hundred and thirty foot square apartment and that's pretty small. I've seen the tiny homes, the larger tiny homes and that's ridiculously small.
Yeah, I think the ones at Mill Creek are about seven fifty.
They're eight, eight thirty-two.
Eight thirty-two. So you know, that's probably a baseline, um.
Tiny homes are less than three hundred square feet mostly.
If you wanted something smaller, if you wanted a number memorialized, we would just need to know what that number is, and then we could make a clear defined number.
And the good news is any number that we write in the amendment is going to go before the planning commission, who would read it and vote on it, and then come before you again, who can read it and vote on it. So if the direction is, hey, we're not sure, but we'd like it to be around two bedrooms. We can go do our research, look at all the two bedroom apartments that have been built in the mid valley in the last few years. And then say, hey, what was a pretty typical square footage for that kind of construction?
That would be helpful.
That's absolutely work I can do. So if there's like a more of a, hey, we want to make sure that the apartments are two bedroom apartments or three bedroom or one bedroom or studio, like whatever that, I am happy to put that together.
I haven't heard from any community members that want apartments going in Omsville.
Well, well, they may not want it, but it's not a choice. They are.
Right, yeah.
There's We can keep it out of, it's something that's, I would hate to say discouraging.
There's a stigma against apartments and there's
Completely.
And I don't think it's fair. And tha- that's just my personal opinion, right? Um, you go to the East Coast and you have tons of apartments. It's super crowded. We don't want that here.
You got puppy and Salem.
Uh,
So too small, then we'll discourage families.
Yeah, but I'm just saying apartments are coming to small rural communities. There's nothing anyone can do about it. I mean, that, that's just the way the Affordable Housing Act has changed. And I think
We can regulate.
We can, yeah, I'm saying we can regulate it and we just have to, we just gently have to ease all our communities into, in dealing with change. I mean, if we're, if we don't.
Word affordable is thrown around too much.
Yeah, it is.
I've got a twenty-four year old pay sixteen hundred for a one bedroom, so affordable.
I think that research would, would be helpful for us. Um, we don't know what developers are going to come up, right? What is a studio apartment going forward, a small rural community? What is two bedroom? What is the average square footage?
I can spit some really off the dome numbers, um, in terms of square footage that are based off of what I see. This is not statistics. This is not me looking at, uh, this is approve applications in a couple of cities, see things coming in. Um, most of the time, studio is between around three hundred and five hundred. One bedroom is usually coming in at close to five hundred to seven hundred. You're seeing smaller one bedroom options now. Two usually is around nine hundred. I live in a nine hundred and fifty square foot, uh, two bedroom apartment. Um, once you're over a thousand, it's usually three bedroom apartments, um, or lofts, which are usually conversions, not fresh builds. Um, but that's sort of where the, where the line, if we were to interpret that as enclosed square footage, not including balconies or open space and not including any storage or garage, which is sort of the current read. It seems like that's the way the code wants it to be read, which is, it's always weird for me to, um, treat the code like a person. It's not, it just says what it says, but you have to sometimes look between the lines and be like, what, how is it defined? Two lines down, right? Um, under that definition, it's pretty much going to just be a smaller three bedroom apartment or a larger two bedroom apartment. That's sort of what it's looking at.
Ella, what did you say our smallest apartments was?
I don't know what the smallest ones are. I just know the ones that we built were eight hundred and thirty-two. Once it, it's two bedrooms, a bathroom, a utility area, kitchen and dining area and a living room. And it has a balcony with a storage unit on the back of it.
So, uh, Liam, I'm going to ask a question. Liam, I have not been briefed about this at length, as you can tell. It just came up as part of our discussion and we said, well, let's just go to council and get some feedback. Could we do a, uh, like we do the lot averaging? Could we do something where we write in?
Yeah.
I mean, could we, and that would encourage a variety of both affordability and family style apartments?
Absolutely. You could, you could certainly do that. Um, you could also, uh, you could also do, let's say you're concerned about a view shed, right? Um, you're concerned about like having a community that looks visible where you don't, yeah, we permit things up to about three or maybe even, uh, you can, you can push it, but about three stories, you can incentivize density for a two story apartment. So you could do something like that to encourage things to be shorter. You can, um, have the, the design standards right now are the same for apartments as they are for a single family, which gets a little funky. You could have different design standards that require there to be open space. And then you could say, hey, you know, if you are actually providing above and beyond that seven percent open space, uh, your average requirement goes low. There's a lot of knobs and dials you can tweak here, but I think it would be really, really easy to say the average dwelling unit in a development must be nine fifty, or the average dwelling unit must be one thousand and allow a variety.
The, the, the advantage to that in my mind, as I'm just sitting here thinking about it is, I mean, I know we want to encourage uh, more aesthetic development. And so I think at least in our mind or in the community's mind, that means larger units. Um, but I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, when you go to design a building, an apartment building is probably similar to dividing up a lot. You're always going to have some area that just doesn't design well. And the nice thing about having something like that is it gives them some flexibility to take this unusable space and add it to a living unit to be able to design something a little smaller in another part of the building.
Absolutely.
You know, so I kind of like that idea.
The, I, I think the such, the good, this is the good news. The good news in terms of all of these conversations is that right now you're at a place where there is no state mandate surrounding plexes or apartments for Omsville. And it doesn't look like there's going to be one in the next legislature. Um, well, the GLCD or, uh, else, yeah, GLCD has already announced what they're working on, so, um, it doesn't look like that's the direction legislature is going for small communities. What that means is that you still have all the tools in your toolbox. Not everybody has all the tools in their toolbox. That means you, you can get as noodly or as I always say noodly, but like precise, fine grained and detailed, or keep things high level. I think that's a pretty good high level solution of, yeah, if the, if the intent is to get larger apartments, then average dwelling unit size is nine fifty. And then you're going to get some that are eleven hundred and, uh, three bedroom. And then you'll get some that are seven fifty, right? It'll balance out theoretically.
So just for definitive, we have that apartment complex property that's already been approved and developed. We can't change the size of the apartments in it.
It, it only affects new applications.
Yeah, nothing, nothing can be applied retroactively. Um, every, every rule is applied at the date an application is received. Um, and then, so let's say, uh,
Well, that's, I mean, these are not built yet. The land is developed and it's ready to go, but then the development stops.
But it's, it's been
So, so it could still stay where it is and we wouldn't have a problem.
If it's the, if it's the property that I believe it is, then your development approval rights have been exercised. And therefore you will always, you will have them in perpetuity until you apply for something different.
I just need to make sure because you know, as we work on selling it and doing things, I need to know what to tell people.
Our position with that particular, uh, project is as long as it's built as approved, it can continue. That's our current position.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure with these changes that it wasn't going to affect that.
Do applications expire?
It, once development approval is exercised, they no longer expire, right? That would a- and that makes sense, right? Like, once we record the partition flat, the city can't go back and be like, well, we're unpartitioning your land, right? We're unbuilding your building. So once they're exercised and each application has a different bar to clear, right? A subdivision, you got a plat. For an apartment complex, you usually just need to break ground or do some level of substantial improvement. And then it's, you're exercised. Um, I actually don't know under the Omsville Development Ordinance, what the requirement for a site development review to be exercised is. That's a good research question.
There's some history with that project, but the city's position in particular with this project is a- as long as it's built per approved, it can't be altered because if it's altered, then we have to go back to the code. And we have to apply the code and currently you can't build apartment complexes in the commercial district.
But when, when that was started, it wasn't commercial.
That, that
That's our problem.
Where is that one?
Behind the store and the restaurant stuff.
Yeah.
Half of it was built, half of it is not built.
Oh, okay.
So it's all developed, the, the buildings aren't built yet. So.
Kind of became commercial.
Yeah.
And because one building is built that is C of O and occupied, the, the, the approval is granted. With those conditions for those structures.
Okay. Then I'm fine with moving forward with what you've recommended.
You're okay with a little flexibility to the one thousand square feet. If, as long as we can make it clear and concise. Is that what I'm hearing?
Not too much.
For the multifamily.
Not a lot, but you're, you've got some play there.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've got one more. This is a really weird one and hopefully I think this is going to be a shorter one. Um, hopefully, which is that we're now going to be adding, it's sort of a use that has already existed. I think many of you have, have talked about this. The SROs, single room occupancies, um, will be a permitted use. In all of the underlying zones at different density levels, uh, at the density level that matches like a single family dwelling. And in that case, an SRO is kind of like a single family dwelling where each room is rented out separately. I think a lot of people, uh, are familiar with that kind of living situation. I had that kind of living situation a couple of times in college, right? Um, it, it's typical, it happens in most communities with single family dwellings. Don't need to worry too much about that. They can also happen at the apartment scale. Uh, currently, all of these requirements regarding, um, minimum unit size will still apply to them. Um, and all of the requirements around parking for a multifamily structure will also still apply to the single room occupancies. Uh, basically, I plan on adding the permitted use to the code and then not changing the development standards for multifamily at all, which apply to them as well. If that's not the direction that the council wants to go and single room occupancies need to live somewhere else or have special things applied to them, we could, um, one example may be apartments require more parking because they have more bedrooms, more people. Single room occupancies have one bedroom. That's supposed to be for one person. Does it need the same amount of parking? Probably, um, but these are, these are options. It's going to come in there. It's going to be kind of weird. My default assumption is to keep them the same. I just want to make sure that that is okay with council where I present that.
I, I just like to give you an example. So, I mean, most people would not know that somebody was doing a single room occupancy in a home. Right? Cause you got three bedrooms. Somebody's renting it out in the paper. I'm not tracking that. We wouldn't even know. But somebody comes in to build a complex that they label a single room occupancy. So envision something that has eight bedrooms, one central kitchen and two central bathrooms or something like that. So you've got shared, you know, bathrooms in the hall. You've got a kitchen room at the, in the basement, and then you've got bedrooms. So you would think of it more, almost more like an upscale motel or something like that.
Like a dorm.
Or a dorm, yeah. A dorm is a good example. I think a BEQs that, you know, on, on, on base and things like that, but yeah, something like that. So the question is, if, if you had an eight room, single occupancy apartment.
Where's everyone going to park?
How are you going to apply the parking standard to that? And should it be different than eight apartments? Or should it be the same as one apartment? It might just be a larger apartment. Right now, I don't think our parking code is, our code is based on the type of use for parking. It's not necessarily based on the number of bedrooms or occupancy or anything like that. So that was the, that's really just the thing to, to, to think about is you could get somebody that comes in that wants to, uh, you know, they really want to build an apartment, but they're going to call it a single room occupancy and try to, you know, alter the way that the pattern is used. Uh, so the question is, do we change that so that we can address it? I'm not sure that we're going to get a lot of that kind of development. I just
I don't, I don't accept, I don't expect it. Um, that tends
I think if you left it under the multifamily, we could cover it through the planning commission approvals.
Well, that's
It may not go to the planning commission.
It may, yeah. Um, and the planning commission, because of changes to limited land use decisions, they'll be making, they'll be holding meetings, not hearings, foresight development review. So there's limited opportunity for feedback. Um, there's, there's very limited opportunity for discretion of subjective standards. All standards have to be clear and objective. So basically it's, here's the list of checkboxes. Did you check them? Did you not check them? If you didn't check them, you're denied unless you get a variance. Um, and that benefits the development process. That helps us move faster through stuff, right? But it also has the downside of if we don't say it, um, then we have to make somebody do a variance and that variance is probably, I mean, I, I don't think that parking variance is
Well, I, I will say in most apartment complexes, they have problems with not having enough parking because you expect two cars per apartment and then you've got teenagers added in and now you have four cars, but you only have two spots you're allowed.
It's actually happening in the mobile home parks right now.
Yeah.
It's a huge, it's been going on for a while.
Well, there is an effort to eliminate parking as a requirement, so just keep that under your
I didn't want to touch that. Um, let's let's, let's not, let's not address that, uh, at this, we could go down that rabbit hole. I don't want to talk about CPEC.
It hasn't happened yet, but
Don't talk about CPEC. First rule of CPEC is you don't talk about CPEC. Okay, um, I get, my intent is to basically add the use to the code, but treat it identically to an apartment, um, which I believe will be appropriate under state law.
When it comes to you for draft review, you can revisit this and think about that standard.
And if anyone wants a copy of my previous presentation, I'm happy to provide it. Um, it will go, it goes into much more depth about the new dwelling types that will be permitted and exactly what the, what the definitions will be and how you have to make things the same across different definitions. This is sort of just like, all right, we're actually sitting down to write it and I'm sorry.
That was painful enough the first time.
You know, I had a great time. I love talking. If you guys want to talk about definitions for thirty minutes, wrong person. Um, but those are kind of the two little sticky wickets that we wanted to come before you.
And, and keep in mind, our development code, Liam knows this, is a living document. You know, we changed it three times. And, and keep in mind, our development code, Liam knows this, is a living document. You know, we changed it three times last year, I think it was. We're probably, because we're constantly being tested, like, what does this word mean and how are you applying it? I would apply it differently as a developer. A, and how are you applying it? So that, so those are some of the things that we're constantly dealing with and. My understanding is Luba has always given a lot of weight to the intent of the policy board. And so oftentimes when we come back and say, was your intent to do this? It's because we want you to get you on the record to say, this was my intent. And then we've got solid ground to go back to that developer and say, no, this is what the council's intent was, so.
It's, it's why if you look at some big city codes, there's like two paragraphs at the beginning of every zone detailing the intent of that zone, right? Um, absolutely correct. So that's what I have for you all today. Does anybody have any lingering questions about land use? Nobody wants to talk about the slight change? I got what I needed. Nobody wants to talk about the tiny change to the difference between a limited land use decision now? Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so we are moving on to six B. SBR equipment proposals. We will invite Matt to come up and provide information.
Alright, uh, Matt Attila, Assistant Public Works Director. I'm here to talk about the SBR equipment package procurement. Um, last month, we brought to you guys the DAPD equipment and this is the second part, probably the more important part, the SBR. Equipment, it took us a little bit more time to go through the proposals. As you saw, one was like eight hundred and something pages. The other one was. Three or four hundred pages, so. Uh, we wanted to make sure we did a good job and reviewed those and there were some follow-up questions with some of the. Proposals, and so we wanted to weigh through those. The Xylem package is one that, um, a lot of. Local uh municipalities have used. Um, Jefferson, for example, the one that we went and looked at. Um, or some of the council went and looked at, that, that, that is the exact, um. Uh, plant that, that is proposed here. I mean. Our flows may be just a tiny bit different. Some of the requirements are different as, um, because of the funding. Um, Baba requirements, but for the most part, the way that, that facility operates is. Is almost identical to Jefferson's. The Aqua Aerobics, there's some local ones. There's one on the coast in Lincoln City. I've personally been to that one as a part of. Uh, PNCWA member, we had a tour there and we went and looked at it. And I actually even called that, um. That oper, or the lead operator of that facility and kind of picked his brain and asked him questions about that facility and, and what he thought were the downfalls and. Um, what was talked about in the staff report was the floating mixers. That's, that's a huge downfall. The floating mixers you've seen.
Doesn't even sound like fun.
Yeah, you, you've seen, you've seen our aerators and our lagoons are similar to that and. This treatment facility is gonna be, you know, fifteen feet in the air, so having to lift those things out. To maintain them, uh, pull rags and different things out of them. That, that's, that's gonna be a challenge for us, especially with our limited public works crew, so. Um, that's a downfall. The other major downfall is that. It doesn't have the ability to operate on one basin, so. In the summer months, our flows go down to about three hundred thousand gallons per day. Um, and in the winter, we're up to two million gallons per day on a, on a storm event, so. To have the flexibility to go down to one basin. Is huge for maintenance and it's huge for those big influxes in, in flow. Um, we've talked about it with our engineer and we've talked about it with Jefferson. Having three hundred thousand gallons go through two tanks. It would take like three days for that water to get through. By that time, it's become septic. You know, we're gonna have issues with turnover. Um, even though the manufacturer says they can do it, we have questions about it and, um. So, uh, those, those are our big concerns. The other one is. Um, with the Aqua Aerobics, there's actuated valves that open and close to let flow into the basin. If one of those failed, you could overflow the tanks. You could have issues with, um. You know, an unpermitted discharge into the creek, since we're so close to the creek, you know, there's that issue. Let alone the damage that could cause, you know, around the building and stuff. If that happened with the Xylem package, there's actually a concrete wall that comes in and. Allows raw wastewater to enter the treatment basin while you're decanting the clean treated. Water because it diverts it down into the sledge blanket and ma, and makes it, makes that, uh. One of their major design, uh. Features that's, that's way different than anyone else, so. Happy to answer any questions. I know the price is kinda scary, the difference between the two. Um, I tried to kind of explain that in the staff report. Um, if we were to go with Aqua Aerobics. Um, equipment, we would. Probably ask them to amend the contract and provide equipment for a third basin because. We need that redundancy in the, in the basins in case, uh, equipment goes down in a high-flow time. And so that we're still able to run the two basins, um, SBR. Yeah.
There's a lot of pages to this. There's a lot of pictures.
Yeah.
So. Having gone to the Jefferson plant. Are we talking about the equipment that's running it for these or is it the concrete blocks?
Correct. It's the, what, what was proposed is the equipment, so. There's, um, like the blower, when we went into the electrical room, there's the motors with the blowers that create the air. That aerate the tanks. That's the equipment that we're looking at. If you remember, there's a decanter that drops down into the water that. Pulls the clean effluent off the top of the, that's part of the equipment package. The concrete, the, um, the piping and stuff like that, that's not, that'll be designed. Still, and that's why we're having to do the equipment procurement first is because. Like, like I was saying with the SBR or with the Xylem, uh, equipment. They have a concrete barrier that goes in between the, the, or the, the SBR basins. Whereas Aqua Aerobics doesn't. That's something our engineer and our structural engineer will have to design into the tank itself. So right, what you're, what you're seeing from them is the equipment, the diffusers, the motors, the electrical equipment. Um, any kind of mechanical equipment in, in the plant, that, that's gonna be coming from, from the manufacturer.
So when you're talking about. I'm thinking of the Jefferson again. So they had like these different ponds within this big.
Yep.
Thing, so what you're just saying, there's just gonna be one pond?
No, there'll be, there'll be two, there'll be two, um, concrete basins. And, um, with both, with, um, both companies, um.
It's basically just like the Jefferson.
Yeah, it's just like the Jefferson one. Um, there's the two concrete basins and then the Xylem or Aqua Aerobics would, would supply the, the. The piping inside, some of the, um, mechanical equipment, the motors, electrical stuff. But.
The basins are what we went upstairs and looked down at?
Yeah.
And that's what he's talking about, that we have to have two.
Yeah, the basins are the concrete walls. But that's, that's not proposed in this equipment package. That's something our engineer will, will design. Based on our flows and then, and then the contractor will put together those concrete basins. The, the Xylem's just gonna provide the equipment that goes inside those concrete basins.
That's, I just.
Yeah.
Clarified.
Yeah.
So there's more.
In my mind.
No, so the Aqua Aerobics, uh, proposal is the same as the Xylem one. Their, their, um, proposal. Uh, I guess is for the equipment that's going inside the basins. And Xylem same, it's with stuff that goes inside the basins. It's just a little bit different technology. And, um, different equipment, so the Xylem one has a pump that goes down. And it has a propeller on it. That's the mixer that sits inside the water and it mixes. During the treatment process, whereas the Aqua Aerobics has those floating. Um, mixers that, that mix the water on the surface.
So I think what our, our staff and engineering have, have come to when we've done the evaluation. Is based on our engineers. Um, review, we would have to add a third basin if we went with the lowest bid. And they would then need to increase their bid to add more equipment, which would put us where we are with our proposal.
Correct. And even if, even if we didn't require them to build another basin, we would, we would have to require them at least to make. Or we would require that we design an EQ basin. And, um, the extra concrete, just in that, even if we didn't ask them to provide more equipment. The extra cost in the concrete itself would. And construction of the basins would, would surpass the difference in the Xylem proposal and the Aqua Aerobics.
And what are, one of our big concerns is also maintenance and operation because we'd need to be able to crane the floating mechanism out. Um, the proposed system. That we have today, it's all self-contained, so it doesn't need to be lifted out, but if we did the floating mechanism. We'd have to crane that out somehow, which means we're either gonna have to add some sort of equipment we didn't consider and design into the project. Um, or we're gonna have to come up with some sort of a process to be able to. Uh, to lift that equipment out. It's most likely some sort of a stationary crane that we'd have to design and add and. Um, I, I think everybody felt like we were uncomfortable enough with the equipment. And the way that it was proposed to operate, that we were better to go with the proven. Equipment that we've seen in operation.
Right.
We don't, just because the, the initial bid is a little bit less, doesn't necessarily mean that. Long-term operation cost is gonna be the same, and so that's where we landed.
And that's why too, that we did the RFP processes, cause the, the price. For the equipment, it's not like you're bidding the whole project, so the, the overall project cost could increase with the Aqua Aerobics. You know, proposal, whereas the Xylem one is more money for the equipment, but the overall project cost. Or, or annual O and M could increase, like Ron said, we might have to get a crane. Or we might have to budget, every year we're gonna pull. Four of these floating mixers out, so we're gonna need to have a crane onsite for four days and that's gonna cost, you know, the city. Forty thousand dollars, for example, you know, just to pull these aerators, whereas with the Xylem one. You know, we may be able to take the basin down in one day. On, you know, clean the mixer and put it back online in the next day, just with staff time and, um, manpower. So. The other thing I might add too is that. With the DAPD equipment and the SBR equipment, it's. Pretty close to what the engineer had recommended or had, had proposed for the cost of the major equipment. It's a little bit, the, the SBR equipment's a little bit more, but the DAPD equipment came in a little bit less, so we're still. Good on budget, what we originally came up with for the project, just as long as we don't see a bunch of more higher costs overall. Uh, in the project, but he feels comfortable with, with where we're at, with the two, combining those two and, and where we're at.
Are there any questions? No, you do, you do.
Yeah, so. The new council member does.
Not sound good.
Which one are you gonna stick around for the next twenty years and operate for us?
The Xylem one, for sure.
Well, then.
Uh, that's it. That's part of the tour.
Bring your bucket with you.
Yeah.
Ask me out soon. Is there a motion? I move to approve the Xylem. Water Solutions SBR Equipment Proposal in the amount of two million twenty thousand five hundred and nine dollars from FEN zero two nine and zero one nine. Contention on USDA approval is presented by staff.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Lot of money.
Thank you. Nice job.
Uh, we will move on to the city administrator report. Ron, go ahead and move your presentation.
I don't have a lengthy report. We've been just working on all of these big ticket items. Uh, uh, I've got, uh, a. Presentation pretty much put together for the, uh, council retreat. Uh, we're gonna start next Monday at nine AM. Uh, one of the things I thought we. Would start off with is a quick, uh, little tour. Once we get here and all assemble, we're gonna go to the new, uh, reservoir. Project and we're gonna just do a quick tour. It's not a hundred percent complete. But we thought it was an opportunity, everybody was to, together. I'm really proud of that project. It's a, it's. I, I've seen other reservoirs constructed, uh, and some recently. And, uh, it, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty solid. Uh, project there, so that's gonna serve the community for many years and. Um, I just think it'd be great for council to get eyes on it and see what we got there.
New tank?
Yeah, the new tank. And so we'll meet here, we'll jump in a couple of vehicles and we can just run over there. Um, and then we'll come back. We will have. Some sort of breakfast for you. I'm not sure what it'll be, maybe a continental breakfast or something. Uh, we'll, we'll serve lunch. And then we'll probably, um, adjourn before dinner. Uh, so that, that'll be the plan. We won't let you get hungry. Uh, on that day, we'll keep you focused on the conversations. That's the twentieth, starting at nine and, um. We, I've got a lot of information to cover, so I'm not sure if we'll get done before five, but, uh, I'll try to. If we can cut it shorter, I'll, I'll be respectful to council's time, so. Uh, I do have, one of the first things I put on the, um. When we get to basically discussing items, we go through the history, like we said we were gonna do. How did we get here type thing. When we get to action items or discussion items, uh, we have council initiatives. We're gonna review the, um. Uh, city events, just to see if there's any thoughts or changes that you guys are thinking of for those. Uh, and I. I think then we go into goals. Um, I've, we've finished a lot of our goals. Uh, to be honest with you, as I'm going through that, there's some goals that are ongoing, maintenance and type of goals, but. A lot of the goals that we listed, not all of the projects that we need to complete, but the ones that were immediate. We either have completed or we're well on our way to completing, and so we'll be revisiting, what does that look like? Is there? Is there other things that we need to add to that immediately? We have. Immediate needs, the question is, is which of those things are? Does council wanna put on there as priorities to work on for us? And so it should be a pretty, I think it should be a pretty fruitful day, uh, for everybody, so. And then there is, I, there is a spring conference coming up for LOC. I think that's in your packet, if that's something you're interested in attending. Um, I typically don't go to those. I try to. You know, save that for the fall, but you guys are welcome. If a bunch of you end up going, I may go, but if not, I'll just.
They have different topics.
Yeah.
They have.
They're not as big as the last place.
No, it's not.
I've never been to there. I have never been to.
I spent two, two spring conferences, um. The first one, I, I got a lot out of the first one and, um, made some really great networking connections. The, the second one was good. I, for me, I didn't find it that useful, but I did go, um. I support you guys going, um, if you guys want somebody. I don't know if I'll be able to go this year. They. Some of that stuff, though, I mean, the bigger one is where we get most like. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they did set it up for the four-day weekend or something.
Yeah.
People wanted to, although I don't know how nice it is over there in May, but, but if you wanna go, you know, conferences are one of those things that. A lot of times you'll get something out of it and sometimes you feel like you got a lot out of it and sometimes you don't feel like you get a lot out of it.
It just depends.
If nothing else, I will tell you, building the relationship with other peers. In cities, it's worth doing, so if you wanna do it, you know, that's, that's fine. We're happy to support that. Just, we just wanted to let you know, it was out. Typically, when they, when they open up registration, they fill out pretty quickly.
Yes.
I think, I, I think I'd be interested in going, but a couple of people have said that you can sometimes get more from the smaller.
I did.
Groups, cause they're not quite so.
I did that very first spring one. I got, it was smaller, I. One of, one of my best friends now is no longer city councillor, but I met him at the spring conference, um, in Herbston and. That was like, I really, I really learned a lot at that one. And then like Ron said, it just depends on the conference. My first OMA conference, I was like, why did I even come here? But the second one. And then like Ron said, it just depends on the conference, my first OMA conference, I was like, why did I even come here, but the second one. Like that was groundbreaking for me, so you just have to go and figure things out.
You're not gonna get as much free stuff.
Oh, I'm not gonna get free hats, I still got bags.
Probably get, you might get a pen and some candy and then you're gonna spend some money in the.
I'm gonna bring all my stuff and repass it out.
I I mean, they do fill up really fast, so that way staff can. Like on the twelfth, when it opens up, like they're calling at eight o'clock in the morning and. Yeah, you wanna go? Alright, we got one down, anybody else? I am ten, I I have to find out some things for some of the appointments.
It can flex in my drill.
I'll drive you.
He missed his last drill for the fall conference.
And this drill is prior to our annual training. I'd love to go.
We do have a uh, we have submitted a uh project that's the the kind of the. Part of a continuation of the work that we've been doing with our water system. Related to capacity, we're, we are a little short on capacity, as we've talked to council before about. And so um. We did submit uh with, they started a new committee at the state level. To look at infrastructure needs early on, we submitted a project. Uh, with that related to drilling some new wells. And uh, we will submit a legislative uh ask. This year uh consistent with that. And so we'll have that prepared. I think, when's the deadline for that? That's the fifteenth.
Think so.
So.
Tomorrow. We gotta, we gotta get it right.
So uh, we probably should have had that for council review, but I know council supports us doing that. Uh, submitting for, cuz that's part of your goal direction is for us to submit for those grants, so. Uh, we will submit that on the fifteenth, I think we put it in around four million dollar project. Um, we just had to uh rationalize some numbers based on previous projects that we did because. The timeline was fair fairly short to submit to the committee and the committee was gonna. Uh, take those projects and those were gonna, they were gonna develop a priority list. That would override the legislative ass, so we had to get that in last fall, so. Um, anyway, just FYI on that, when you go to lobby, you'll have a copy of that, uh whoever goes to lobby, but. We are trying to get some additional grant dollars for. The next round, we don't know what those things, and we'll talk more about this at the retreat, um. If we'll even be successful drilling. What what more wells in the community, it's 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 been a real uh hit and miss.
We're using the same company again.
Effort, yeah. One of the things in our capital facilities plan is uh maybe to connect to the city of Salem's. Water system and buy water from them because they have a water pipe not too far away. Well, like Turner does.
Then they regulate the cost.
They do regulate the cost uh of what we pay. Um, and that does factor in, but considering how difficult water rights are to get and um. And then drilling a well in the city, I would prefer that we drill some wells to maximize our current water rights. And then look at connecting to the city of Salem's. But uh, we may wanna do a feasibility study.
On on that topic. On on the connection to Salem, I mean, I was gonna bring it up in council reports, um. Did you guys read the State Journal article about Detroit Dam?
Oh, they're gonna draw it down next year.
The studies that they used in that were in two thousand and eight, right? And it, for me, it's not about whether it gets drained or not, or when, or the fish, um. I got a few phone call, I got a few.
But you care about fish.
I do, I do care about fish, I care about all salmon, I care about all fish, I really do, like. But when we're talking about connecting to water, right, so um, those studies were done in two thousand and eight. So what happened in twenty twenty? We had water blooms and we had fires, so when that water gets down. That we have all that that muck and sediment, and we don't know what's in there now. And all of that is gonna come down, it's gonna come down the canyon, it's gonna go down Stanton, it's gonna. Bypass Jefferson, Turner, go into Salem, so. I have concerns about what is in. That muck water that's coming down the line.
Since that, since that bloom occurrence, the city of Salem built, I think, a state-of-the-art charcoal filtration.
I know they were working on it.
That all of their waters running through it.
But it's not just. Well, it's not really the bloom that was concerning me, it's like. There's ash at the bottom of that, in that muck, and what burned, it's not just forests that burnt, you had homes, you had toxins, you had all these other things that we don't know. There is now in the sediment that is not in that two thousand and eight study, so that's why I'm like.
Well, they do, they do have to treat their, treat and filter their water too, so. Um, well, anyway, I. It's just one of those things to think about when we think of where where is our, where is our least restrictive issue to deal with right now? The reservoir became a little higher on the list because we really needed fire flow storage. Um, and you know, we're seeing. The results of that on a bigger scale in LA where they didn't really have enough and they probably could have. They might have been able to reduce some of that damage if they had better fire flow, we don't wanna be in those. Types of positions, so that was really a a necessity and with the limiting. Amount of capacity that we we had, having that extra storage to help. Get us through peak peak uh pumping periods or demand periods was kind of vital, so. We kinda said that all of a sudden became the priority and rose to the top of the list. Our restrictive capacity right now is our source, the amount that we can actually take from the ground, not our water right portfolio. That's the next level of restriction, so we're kinda working our way through. Uh, trying to address all of these issues and uh. And we're gonna see, we're gonna see a lot of demand on our system. Over time. Uh, you know, we talked about development and on one hand, I understand affordability, on the other hand, I'm thinking where, how are we gonna serve? You know, these big units that are gonna come in, so we're gonna have to balance that. Uh, so anyway, we'll have a deeper conversation. At the retreat into all of these subject matters, but I just wanted to give you a preview so you can get your. Your thinking cap on about some of those things and we'll have some suggestions, but basically. I think we're gonna really need to do some feasibility analysis to determine things like the feasibility analysis can look at. Kind of quality of water we're getting, you know, if we do that, and how much is it gonna cost and? Is it even feasible to connect to wherever that line might be, is it over here, is it over there? Um, you know, type of a thing, so we should at least have that information. Um, we could drill the next two wells and they can come up empty, and then what's our next level of approach?
Sure, one more shot, right?
Okay, so if it comes up empty again, we waste, or we lose another grant on that, I'm really gonna go out there with my little crossing sticks.
Well, the grant that I submitted for was to drill up to three wells. So. Well.
Thought it was two.
Which one?
Does the tower well count as one?
Well, we already did that, we rehabilitated.
But the three new, that doesn't count as one, right? That's the one we did.
No, no, three new ones, in addition, forget those. Three new ones is what I put into the application, so. And then we have to be able to connect wherever those are. To the city, so right now we have a contract, we're working with the company to look at some feasibility of some of the sites. And you know, we'll just, we'll take, if we get the grant. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll come back to council and talk about all that stuff, so. So lots to talk about, I don't wanna bore you guys, uh, I know I'll bore you enough at the retreat with this stuff, but we'll go over all of that. Um, I can't think of anything else, things are running. Pretty smooth, we're trying to meet all of these deadlines which are quick quickly approaching.
Feeling good though after got the SBR and DAP equipment.
Yeah. And if you have any questions, happy to answer. Police report, public works is in your packet, everything seems to be running. Smooth, we're getting everything done right now, we're catching up on. Wintertime things, so I think things are moving along pretty well.
Is there anything for, sorry, I almost said anything, mayor and councillor reports?
We had a SCATS emergency meeting today to approve. Up to a thousand. Electric vehicle units being installed, some of them will be in Salem, Twolleton is the. Lead on that, um, but that did pass so that that will be coming to Salem. And they're putting it in places like libraries, parks, where people who don't have it available to them can use them.
Is that charging stations?
Yes. No, there will be a charge for them, but. A lot of apartment units don't have a way to have electrical vehicles charged at them, so. This will put, and we don't know how many each city's getting yet, that's all to be determined.
Yeah, and I have a little bit of an update from the local public sort of safety coordinating council. Which is also the criminal justice advisory committee, uh, just mostly an update on their um. The House Bill four thousand two, which is kind of the fix for measure one ten. Um, just an update on the programs that they're doing and how that's familiar, he wants to know about that, they can. Happy to share it.
Thank you. Is there anything for um? Go to the order. You guys know what go to the order is?
I, there is an open house at the Food Country on Thursday from eleven to two. For celebration of our one year. Come join us.
Thursday? Text me that date? Yeah, I was just asking, do you guys know what go to the orders were? Alright.
Find us.
Uh, council reports are like things that you're involved in and you read like, something happened and you wanna report it. Uh, go to the order is anything new that you would like to bring that wasn't. Is that right, or that isn't in the?
Well, we actually have council initiatives before that, which is anything council wants to bring, good of the order typically would be things like. Events that you wanna invite the council to or things that might be happening. Kinda like what Bella did, that's typically, it's just non-business stuff, but we wanna throw it out there.
Alright, um, it says no correspondence, but I did get a letter from the Omso Historical Society. So I'm just gonna read it real quick, it's it's a nice letter, uh, it's dated December twenty seventh, two thousand and four, it says, dear mayor and city council. The Omso Historical Society thanks you for the donation check from the Corn Festival. We appreciate your consideration in this donation, historical citing, his society members have enjoyed participating in the corn bagging event. AHS is planning on investing into a new computer with your donation funds. Also, Historical Society would like to extend a big thank you. Uh, to the city and staff and volunteers that helped make the twenty twenty four Corn Festival a success. Um, sincerely Ted Shepherd, president of the Omso Historical Society.
And I would just say that if you have not been to this, an historical society meeting. There, there, you're welcome to go, they're, they're open. And um, it's a good, very robust group and it's, it's certainly worth investing the time to attend a meeting. And you can contact uh Ted and he'll get you out a meeting schedule or an invite. And just say, when are you guys doing the food? Cuz that's the meeting I wanna attend.
I get, you can ask them to send you a text, and they'll put you on their text thread, I um. I I get texts for that.
But oftentimes they'll have speakers, they'll talk about projects that they've done in the museum and it 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 is quite interesting. And if you haven't had a chance to tour the museum, that's. Also another thing that's worth doing, and just keep in mind that when you tour it, that used to be city hall. And.
It was the original bank for the city.
Yes, it was the original bank, but I I do have pictures when it was city hall and everybody was kinda crammed in desk to desk.
It wasn't kind of, it was. That when they had council meetings, sometimes we had to sit at their desks.
Yeah, but it's worth a walk-through, so.
There is no executive session, um, if there isn't anything else, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight twenty eight PM.